Hi, everyone. Thank you for joining. We'll give it a couple of minutes. Just because I know activities period starts at 1:05, so students will be trickling in as it gets closer to that. But thank you, everyone, for joining us. Happy Earth Day to everyone. While we're waiting, if everyone wants to introduce themselves in the chat and because it's Earth Day, if you want to share your favorite outdoor place, anywhere can be in Boston, can be in over the world, in the country, wherever, to celebrate Earth Day. All right, so we're gonna get started. It's 1:05 now, and I'm sure students will be trickling in. I wanted to start by thanking everyone for joining us today. My name's Elizabeth. I'm a junior. She/her pronouns, and I am a Suffolk Quotes Ambassador, and I'll pass it to Saeda to introduce herself.
Hi, I'm Saeda. I'm a freshman, and I also use she/her pronouns, and I'm a Suffolk Quotes Ambassador.
So, thank you, everyone, for coming, and we want to give a special thank you for everyone who joined this event and our cosponsors. Thank you to the CAS Honors Program, the Center for Student Diversity Inclusion, SGA, Suffolk Women in Government, the Political Science Department, and the Suffolk Democrats, and also a special thank you to City Councilor Flynn and Vanessa for joining us today. We hope today will be a starting point for students to connect with the government, and Boston's government in particular, and to learn more about how it functions. So, City Councilor Ed Flynn, he represents Boston's Second District, which includes Suffolk's campus, also includes parts of Beacon Hill, Chinatown, South Boston, and the South End. He served as the City Councilor since 2017, and he's the Chair of the City and Neighborhood Services. And so, we're so appreciative to have him here today, and we're looking forward to getting to know him better. So, just some goals that keep in mind today. So, we invited here the Councilor Finn to be with us because it's important for constituents to have a relationship with their elected representatives and to promote accessibility of local officials. We tend to hold them to a higher status, but really, their job is to listen to their constituents and act based on their needs. It's important, secondly, to be aware of the different policy positions your elected officials take on various issues. You want a representative who will present your values and to be vocal about certain issues important to you. And then, our last goal is, one of our goals at Suffolk Quotes is to encourage students to participate with their government beyond voting and to build a relationship with our representatives. Because, once you establish connection, you're more comfortable with reaching out and advocating for the issues you care about. So, I will pass it to Saeda to go over just a couple of rules we have.
So, these are some of the ground rules for today. We will first be asking questions that were already submitted, but we will open up the floor for questions later on. So, just, just keep in mind to be respectful. We all know what that means, you know, to be respectful of one another's opinions, even if it is different from your own. Also, keep in mind today's goals is to just get closer to your elected representative and to get to know them a lot more. Also, one, Mike, you know, don't talk one over one another. We also have chat function, so if you do want to comment on things respectfully, just use the chat. Also, be mindful of other people's time. Make sure that you're not taking all the time to ask only your questions. Let others participate. And also, step up, step down, which is the same sort of thing. You know, be respectful, ask questions that pertain to today's subject, and just have fun. We're really, really excited that you're here and willing to get more involved.
Awesome. Thank you. So, now, we'll pass it to Councilor Flynn to just briefly introduce himself and talk a little about his district and his job. So, we'll give it to him to take it away.
Well, thank you, Elizabeth. Thank you, Saeda, and Adam, and the entire team here at Suffolk, the students at Suffolk. Thank you for the opportunity to be here with you. And I also wanted to say thank you on behalf of Vanessa Wu from my, from my team as well. We're glad to be here in talking about government, how it works. As Elizabeth mentioned, I represent District Two, which includes Suffolk University Campus, includes South Boston, the South End, the Bay Village, Chinatown, parts of Beacon Hill, where you are, parts of Back Bay. I believe that engagement with my constituents is, is one of the most important parts of my job, so I'm very grateful for what you're doing here and organizing this important meeting. I'm in the community all of the time. I try to build positive relationships with residents, with community organizations in my district by attending, hosting events across the district. One issue that I focus on as I relate and answer questions and engage residents is just a little bit about my district. It's probably one of the most, it's probably the most diverse district in the city. There's nine district city councils. I represent the largest number of residents that live in public housing of any district in the city. I also represent the largest Asian community of any district in the city. I also represent, I believe, the second largest Spanish-speaking district in the city. And I, I think I also represent the largest immigrant district in the city, and I'm proud to represent that diverse district. Language access is a critical issue. It's probably the number-one issue I focus on in my job as a district city councilor. Because of my, because of the diversity of my district, it is critical for me to communicate with my constituents and them, and them to communicate with me. And I can only do that with dedicated and professional staff that I have that work for me, including, including Vanessa. We communicate in Cantonese, we communicate in Mandarin, and we communicate in Spanish to our constituents. And I specifically wanted a diverse team on my district, I'm sorry, on my staff, that could communicate in various languages, that could relate to and understand the immigrant, the immigrant voice in our city. Of the five people on my team, four of them are women of color, and four of them are immigrants. And I specifically wanted that because I wanted to stress the important role immigrants play in our city. They've helped build our city. They've helped build our country. And I, you know, I had the opportunity to serve 25 years in the United States Navy in difficult environments and hazardous hesitant environments across, across the world, including the Middle East and, and other difficulty areas. And I've seen immigrants serve with me in harm's way. I've seen community, members of communities of color serve with me in harm's way. And I, I look at the rise of hate crimes in our city, in our country, especially hate crimes against the Asian community. And here they are serving in harm's way in, in the United States military. And then, we come back to the United States, and, and they're a victim of hate crime, or their, their parents, or the grandparents are victim of hate crimes of bullying, intimidation. So, those are issues that are important to me. The Chinese community, many, many of you study the immigrant role in our city and country. The Chinese community, along with the Irish immigrants, build the transcontinental railroad connecting the country. And I just say, say that as an example. We see that famous photo in, out of Salt Lake City when the railroad was completed. Hundreds of people in the, in the photo, and not one Asian person is in the photo. And what do we, what did our country do after the Chinese built the railroad? We excluded them from coming into the country. Chinese Exclusion Act. So, I say that because I'm proud to represent an immigrant community, and I fight for my residents. I advocate for them, and I don't let anyone try to disrespect or intimidate my constituents. And, and I don't tolerate any of that. Thank, thank, thank you, and I hope that's helpful to the answering to the first question.
Yes, thank you. So, now, we will open it up for the rest of our questions. So, Saeda and I will take turns. If anyone else has any questions, if you want to put them in the chat, and hopefully we can get to them at the end. And our first question is just kind of like a general, like, can you explain how the city government works? Like, how do laws get passed? How do the committee process work? Can you just give us a general overview of how the policy process works at the city level?
Yes, that's a good question. Boston, just especially for our students in government, it has a strong mayor system. So, the mayor initiates a lot of policy and has a lot of power. But the council also initiates a lot of the regulations. In-laws need to be passed by the council in order to be in effect. So, usually, the mayor or the council will file a noendance or a home rule petition. But we also need approval from the state on, on a home rule petition. So, basically, if we want to change the city charter or make changes to the charter in the city, it has to be passed by the city council. It has to be approved by the mayor, a home rule petition, and then it has to be voted on by the legislature and signed by the governor. That's how law is passed in, in our city. But certainly, the mayor and the council have an important role in regulations and policy on various departments and city agencies, including the, the Boston Police, Boston Fire, Office of Immigrant Advancement, Office of Food Access, and certainly the public school system. So, the mayor's team works closely with the city council, but also with the residents. And that's an important part of it, is hearing the voices and concerns and frustrations and challenges of residents across, across the city and trying to implement policy change to address those, those issues.
Thank you for that. And then, I'll pass it to Saeda for the next question.
The next question is, Suffolk has a large number of commuter students who rely on public parking in order to drive to campus. As Chair of the City and Neighborhood Services, you work on parking in the city. How are you working on improving parking and transportation for students in the city?
It's a very good question. It's, it's a major challenge we have, certainly parking, traffic, pedestrian safety is, is a critical issue that I focus a lot on. But we work closely with the Boston Transportation Department on improving our traffic infrastructure, communicate to them from residents about what their ideas are on improving parking and transportation issues, including bike access and pedestrian safety. We also have a planning transportation development committee on the city council, which works with the Transportation Department, with the Boston Planning Development Agency, which is the old BRA, and the zoning board. And those, all, all those agencies have a direct impact on parking and transportation. But just on parking and, and traffic and pedestrian safety, the 25 mile an hour speed limit in our city is too fast. I know, I know exactly where your college is, and, but can you imagine driving down Beacon Street, going by the State House, driving 25 miles an hour, and expecting to stop in a crosswalk when, when, when an elderly person is, is walking or a person with disability is walking? It's almost impossible to stop. So, I, I think we need significant drastic infrastructure improvements on pedestrian safety-related issues. And we need to desperately lower the speed limit with strict enforcement, zero tolerance for any car. I even think going from 25 to 20 is not enough. I think, I think it's 15 miles an hour that we need in this city. I've said it many times. I've held hearings on it. And I've had a little, a little child in my district was hit by a car and killed the first several months when I started. It wasn't, it wasn't a speeding-related issue per se, but, but the cars in our city are going too fast. And we need a dedicated Boston Police Section that deals specifically with traffic enforcement to deal with that, with that issue. But it's something that I, I continue to work on. We make improvements, but not enough. More work needs to be done.
Thank you for that. I will say pedestrians in Boston are not afraid
Yeah.
of crossing. So, our next question is, Suffolk provides two years of residential housing for students. The majority of students who live on campus are either out of state or they live too far to commute to campus. Many upperclassmen have to find off-campus housing. Boston is the fifth most expensive city in the country for renters. As a member of the community on housing and community development, how are you working to improve the cost of housing to make it more affordable in Boston?
Yeah, that's another good question. I've worked and advocated with residents who are facing difficulties in their housing situation. Worked with organizations that you might be familiar with, the Chinese Progressive Association, to prevent displacement, especially for our immigrant neighbors, low-income residents, seniors, persons with disabilities. I strongly support rent control. I know it's not, many people don't support it, but I, I support it. I support measures that would help build affordable housing in the city for low-income working families. I'm a strong supporter of public housing. Boston Housing Authority plays a critical role in our city and in my district. I've held hearings on ways to discuss what the city can do to face eviction and displacement and short-term rentals. We need to continue to watch closely about them, especially at this time. They are taking precious housing stock away from our city. But we need to, what, what, what I'm, what I've advocated for is removing investor units in opposing these executive suites, basically, that are nothing but, you know, de facto hotels, in my opinion. They're not regulated. They're taking away, they're also taking away jobs from people that work in the hotels, and many of them are immigrants, and many of them are women, many of them are from communities of color, and they're my constituents. So, I, I fiercely advocate for them, and I don't want to see them lose their job because someone wants to open a 25-unit de facto hotel. And I'm going to challenge the zoning board when someone needs approval every time, and I'm consistent about that. And when you, when we see these short-term rentals go up that are, that are hotels, what we're saying is that the voice of immigrants doesn't matter in the city. Because we'll, when we open these hotels, de facto hotels, that means someone is not going into, into a traditional hotel, and that's a job for someone that desperately needs that income to support their family. And those are good jobs, they're good wages, they're, they're union jobs. And again, they're women, they're communities of color, and it's a pathway to the middle class. And that's what I strongly advocate for and strongly, strongly believe in. And I strongly support organized labor and having residents impact policy decisions on on housing and economic justice issues as well.
Thank you. The next question is, Boston is one of the most racially segregated U.S. metro cities. With the recent rise in hate crimes against Asian-Americans, along with more visibility of police brutality taking place, how do you plan to create a more equitable city environment?
I think, I think a big part of it is, is, is speaking out as an elected official that represents a large immigrant community. But even more importantly than speaking out is listening to voices of immigrants, listening to voices of the Asian community, continuing to engage them. You know, during this pandemic, my constituents were victims of bullying, intimidating, intimidation. And I held the first public meeting on, on the coronavirus in, in the country. And I had that certainly in New England. I, I would like to see if that, that's an accurate statement. I, I had it in January 28th, January 2020. I had a public meeting about coronavirus at the Josiah Quincy School. Many of you know that school as well. And what's interesting with the, with the big takeaway for me is it was a young Asian high school student from Boston, and she, she goes to, she attends Boston Latin. And she, she got on the train. This is, this is as, as the pandemic. No, no, this is when coronavirus was just becoming prevalent in the, in the media, really. This young student at Boston Latin would get on the public, would get on the MBTA train. And when she would get on the train, the white commuters on the train would get off the train or move to the other side of the train to not be with her or be near her. And this, this really impacted her and her family, but impacted, it impacted everybody in the, in the, in the room. But my, my takeaway is, people identified this young student who's, who's doing her best, whose family is, is, comes from China. But people identified this young student with coronavirus. And then, we saw it throughout the country, Asians being intimidated, beat up, bullied. And I've consistently advocated in support of the Asian community, but increasing, but addressing hate crime issues. And I've probably been the first person, maybe, maybe in the country, to talk about Asian violence during this pandemic. And, and I don't say that to, to give myself credit. I only say that because I take the job of the, I take this job very seriously. And I represent my constituents at the best I can. And when I, when I think someone's being intimidated, or I think someone's being bullied or disrespected, especially someone that doesn't, you know, may not speak English, they may not be here legally, and that's not a reason for someone to intimidate anybody. So, I guess I'm going to consistently and continue to advocate against hate crimes. And my, my father was the mayor of Boston at one, at one point, and he started the Human Rights Commission. And and that Human Rights Commission in the city was a way for the city to discuss hate crimes and document hate crimes and investigate hate crimes. And it's been kind of non-existent, to be honest with you, for like 15 years. And Mayor Walsh brought it back to, to, to existence for a long period of decline, but it can play a critical role in this city. And that's something I, I want to continue to work on is beefing up hate crime the staff on the Hate Crimes Commission, but also education, public awareness about respect and dignity for all people, especially for people that, that are immigrants that might be here under very difficult circumstances during this challenging time. They might have difficulty getting food. They might have difficulty paying bills. But that's even more of a reason why government has to support them during this pandemic and, and as we go forward.
Thank you for that. And as you mentioned, you, you're the son of a former Boston mayor. So, you probably grew up inspired to pursue a career in public service. So, how do you persuade the next generation of Bostonians to engage with their community and potentially pursue a career in public service like you did?
Yes, I, I, I have, I have a difficult time answering that question because although my father was the mayor, I didn't necessarily plan on being in, in government. I got off to a late start in government. I'm, I'm, I'm in my, I'm 50, I'll be 53, so I, I'm only in my third year. So, I'm, so I'm late getting into elective office. But I, I, I don't necessarily think you have to be in politics to, to be in, to help people and and make a difference. And as I mentioned, I was in the military, but I was also a probation officer at Suffolk Superior Court, which is right here, right next to you guys. So, I, I, I work with people coming out of jail. I work with people coming out of prison on reentry initiatives. And query reform is something that's important to my constituents, but important to the city, to residents of the city. But I just highlight that as an example that that there's a lot of ways to get involved in government without running for office. But one of the things that you're doing right now is, is critical, is learning about government, learning how it operates, learning about people, learning about issues, and seeing, seeing what's best for you as you go forward from your college, your college education, whether you go to graduate school, whether you are interested in government, interested in nonprofits. But there's a lot of opportunities, including running for office for you, for you all eventually, if, if that's what you want to do. But just want to let you know that, you know, getting involved in your neighborhood and community is, is so vitally important and trying to mentor young people, whether it's as a coach, a youth sports coach, or as a tutor. And that's, that's what government, to me, is about.
Thank you so much. So, we have a question from another person saying, "Today is Earth Day, and I'm wondering, what are some of Boston's major climate initiatives that are currently underway? And what do you think Boston can do to be an even stronger leader in becoming a climate-conscious city?"
That's, that's a great question. I think as the city continues to build, especially during, during this pandemic, in planning, planning and development, we need to make sure that climate resiliency plans are built into RFIs, requests for information, when projects are announced by the BPDA or, or the development community. There has to be a climate justice aspect to all development and planning in the city. And one, one issue that I, I would like to highlight that might be one one issue that I I would like to highlight that might be very direct and close to close to you. And it it certainly impacts you because I know many of you live in the downtown area in the Beacon Hill area, and you and you go to school here and you visit. I know many of you visit Chinatown also at least once a week because it's 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 right down the road from you. But there was a group called the, if I'm getting this, if I'm getting the name incorrectly, it's called the Union Society of Scientists. And they they had a study out. And I I talked to them and read the study. But the the Chinatown community, which is down the road from you, has the highest rate of asthma of any neighborhood or town in the in the state of Massachusetts. So we talk about climate justice. There it is right there, right down the road from us. And here we have a community that's in a school, and you guys know where Josiah Quincy School is, right, right on top of the Mass Pike or next to it, I should say, on the Mass Pike on the on the highway system down the road from the South Station Bus Terminal, where the buses run all day in the in the terminal, as you as you guys know, from the from the fumes. We have the Amtrak train station. We have the direct truck route from basically from Maine to Florida from from ninety-three, ninety-five going up to Maine. But you know, there's no, we we understand why that the Chinatown is the highest asthma rate because we breathe the the residents are breathing in those fumes all day long. And we 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 are building a brand new public high school, a new Josiah Quincy High School. But I don't pretend to be an an expert on architecture or design. But I insisted that that school address, when we're planning the school, that we address the high asthma rate in Chinatown and what changes, infrastructure changes, physical changes, can we make to that building to make it more healthier for our children, for our students? So that's 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 just an example of of what I think of when I hear about the environment of climate justice, or I I try to relate it directly to the impact it has on my constituents, my residents. And I try to make a difference in that that immediate area. I can't control everything in this city. I can't I I can only do so much, but I do know that I can't have an impact in my in my district. And if I have the influence, the ability to influence policy, I I I take that opportunity and I don't I don't accept no for an answer from anybody on issues that impact my constituents. And if I get no on on issues, I'll go right to the top. I'll go to the mayor because I I my constituents expect me to advocate for them and for their for their quality of life. Because wealthy people in in other neighborhoods can call directly to the mayor if they're in the business community, or they have influence and they can they can get things done through their attorneys. But my constituents can't do that in in public housing or the immigrant community or communities of color. They can't just pick up the phone and contact the mayor, but I can. And so I insist and I and sometimes I demand that we look at things differently when it impacts residents in my district, and we look at things that that impact immigrants in my district. And I don't speak for all my my counselors, but I don't I don't like accepting no from from anybody in in city hall.
Thank you for that. To be cognate of time, we're going to move to some questions that were asked in the tract in the chat. So the first one is, respected Councilor Flynn, you mentioned that you're proud to represent the most diverse area in Boston. My question is, serving a melting pot of people, how do you care to everyone's needs? Is it challenging to keep things equalized between different groups of people?
Yes, it's very difficult. It's very challenging. It's it it it's hard to do. It can be frustrating at times. I can get frustrated at times as well. But it is, to answer your question directly, it's challenging. It doesn't always work. But you know, government and and politics, as you know, it's about compromise. And if 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 I don't, I don't, I don't pretend to have all the answers, but know what I try to do is listen to people. And I listen, I rely on my staff a lot because I I can only communicate in English. And my staff can communicate in Cantonese, and they can communicate in in Mandarin and Spanish. And they have a different life experience than I do. Vanessa has a different life experience than I do, and Sophia and Anna and Melissa all do. So I rely on them. The younger than I am, they have a different view of the city and different view of the of the country, maybe than I do. So I try to learn from them. I I my wife and I have two children. I try to learn from my wife, Kristen. I try to learn from my daughter, who's a college student, and my son, who is a high school student. So I try to I try to listen to people.
Thank you so much for that answer. The next question in the chat that I'm seeing is from Stephen. What changes do you see occurring in the city going forward post pandemic? Changes in office space, new public health measures, or anything along those lines?
Yeah, first of all, thank you, Stephen. And that's my son's name is Stephen, and he spells it the same way you do, S.T.E.P.H.E.N. So I like how you spell it as well. So let me just, let me just talk about public health. It's an issue that I didn't study growing up, or I didn't study when I came to the city council, but it's probably the issue that I studied the most and I I enjoy the most. And and it's 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 an issue that impacts everybody, but again, especially the our immigrant community and communities of color and access to quality healthcare is is a civil right or a human right, as far as I'm concerned. And I'm also the vice chair of civil rights. And one of the issues I focus on on civil rights besides advocating for immigrants, but I I spend a lot of my time on supporting persons with disabilities as well. I'm I'm a disabled veteran. That's not the reason I strongly advocate for persons with disabilities, but but I try to make sure that government works for persons with disabilities for for everybody, but especially for people that don't have access to government leaders. But public health, just as an example, I know I know it's important to me, it's important to you, but when I highlight the immigrant community, but I also hire highlight, you know, challenges families have in getting to appointments. And when they're at medical appointments, you know, again, the first thing I mentioned to you today was language access. Do we have enough people in hospitals that can speak various languages? Do we have enough people in our schools, social workers, mental health counselors that can communicate in many languages? So not only can you communicate with the student, but you can communicate with the student's family and make sure that the student's parents, mother, mother or father, or guardian know exactly some of the issues and challenges the student has, but also developing a path that that student can go on that might be helpful to them. So I think language access connects all agencies in our city. I think language access connects us as a society. And if we're dismissive of people because they they can't communicate with us in our language, or they or they might have a difficulty, even if they speak English, and they might have a difficult time with English as well. So they're also important. Everybody's important. And that's that's what I try to focus on as a city council.
Thank you for that. The next question that we have is, can you briefly discuss some of the points of the City of Boston's Reform Bill regarding policing? And what can we expect to happen if any changes and when?
Yeah, the city, the city is is currently going through the budget process. Right now, the budget was just released. And the mayor has proposed restructuring, rethinking, reorganizing the way we do policing in the city. And many of you are familiar with I just want to give you an example. I try to give examples so I can make things as clear for me and for you, but many of you are familiar with the crisis we have at Nassau, Albany Street, Southampton Street. It's a mental health crisis. It's a substance use crisis. But do we want police responding to mental health crisis in our city, regardless of the the location? We want to make sure that that we're able to redirect those types of calls, as an example. Maybe it's not the response responsibility of the police to deal with mental health crisis related calls, nine-one-one calls. You know, maybe that person might need the opportunity for medical care. Maybe that person might need the opportunity for mental health counseling sub or drug treatment program. And what are the services available for that person? So I use that as a as an example of how we we think differently of the police and their response. And that's what I want to focus on as we go forward is you know, the police play play an important role in our community. But so don't mental health professionals, so don't social workers in after-school programs in public education. You know, getting people the needed quality public education in after-school activities, programs, mental health counseling, we're going to need more of that as we go forward, especially during this difficult year during the pandemic, especially for our young, young students that haven't been in class for the last year, and maybe they're from an immigrant family. Maybe their their parents might not speak English, but how does that young student communicate that he needs or she needs you know, mental health counseling? And how do we connect that person to that mental health counseling? Again, in that neighborhood where services are available, where people that are providing those services understand someone's culture, someone's history, someone's background, and and can communicate with them effectively and with empathy.
Thank you so much for that. As an immigrant myself, I really appreciate that you're looking out for other immigrants who may not have linguistic skills to communicate what they need. So I really appreciate that. The next question is from Jason. Counselor, what is your proudest legislative accomplishment?
I I would say my proudest legislative accomplishment is I mean, besides, I would say, besides language access, I highlighted that and besides besides support of the immigrants, another part of that aspect is, I would say working in government, I I don't know if I'd call it legislative action, but working in government as as a leader on food access has been probably the biggest highlight for me in terms of my accomplishments during this pandemic. Making sure my my constituents, residents of my of the city really also have access to sites across the city where they can they can pick up groceries once a week and groceries that are respectful to their culture and respectful to their culture. We've done that consistently over the last year. And you know, there's probably nothing, nothing worse than someone going going hungry, especially especially a child or especially a a senior senior citizen or or a person with disabilities. So I would I would have to say that working with my colleagues, working with the mayor, not it's not, it's not just me. I don't, I don't, it's not just me. It's it's working with residents, especially, working with residents, especially in my team. But getting people access to food during this difficult year is is the highlight of my my career so far on on the council, probably.
Would I be able to just add to the counselor's comments too?
Go for it.
Yeah, so um, and and the last year has been extremely difficult. And early on in the pandemic and around like late March, the counselor, this is not really so much a legislative accomplishment, but also I believe a a strong accomplishment that the counselor did is that he asked our office to organize calls to check up on seniors. I I I mean, I I think we all remember initially when the pandemic started, you know, there was very little information of how how the coronavirus spread, and it was a lot of concern with our seniors because they were the most vulnerable. And so the or the counselor organized a senior, a district-wide senior call. And so our office, we we were each assigned a list of different neighborhoods and including language capacities. And we called up folks in Chinatown, folks in South Boston, folks in South End to make sure that they were okay and to make sure that they were getting food deliveries, because a lot of these seniors were not really, you know, able to to go out, and they were afraid to go out. So so we checked in on them and made sure that they were able to be connected to the office, the mayor's office of food access, as well as reaching out to volunteers who were who were less afraid to to, you know, deliver or coordinate efforts to get get those foods delivered to these seniors. So I'd say that was that was a a great effort. And a lot of the seniors also were able to to benefit and secured food during during that like critical time.
Thank you for that. And so our last question, because we want to be mindful of time, but this one's a great way to end it, kind of like a call to action. So Adam asked, you mentioned compromise and advocacy as two main skills of being effective in politics. What are some other skills and experience you would recommend to students to work on if they're interested in being an effective community leader or public official?
In terms of, I'm just trying to think of the question, like personal skills, like personal skills, I think the ability to listen to people is probably the most important aspect. And again, I don't I don't get it right all the time. I I try to, but I don't get it right all the time. Sometimes I get impatient and and don't listen to the question and don't listen to the comment. I jump right in. That's that's my impatience, and that's you know, that's that's those are my challenges, but I try to work on that. But I think the ability to listen is the most important aspect of an of an elected official. And not not waiting to think about what your response is to the question. I mean, at times I think about the response to the question before I even know what the question is. And that, again, that's 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 my fault. That's that's a fault I have to improve improve on. But listening to the question, understanding who's asking the question, why they're asking the question, and then let them and then think about it for a second, and then and then give your response. But as an elected official, you 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 have to listen to your residents because because you can't know everything that's happening in someone's life. And when someone calls an elected official, when someone calls me on the phone, you know, people don't generally call an elected official, but when someone does call an elected official on the phone, that's the most important call. That person's probably making all year, you know? And that's, the person's not calling you just to shoot the breeze and, you know, check in and say hi. That person has a serious problem if they're calling you. So I take that call seriously, and that person needs help. That person might be hungry. That person might, their kid might be on, you know, suffering from drug use and is looking for a detox bed. Or that person might be having challenges with their school for their child on special education issues. So that's, that call is the most important call. That person might be making all year. And I don't, I don't mean to exaggerate it, but I think it's that critical when you get those calls. And I do stress to my team, when you get that call, that we try our best to help the person. And I'm thankful that Vanessa has been doing that, and my team has been doing that. But it's hard. It's very, very hard, especially during this year. And we get stressed out, you get stressed out, I get stressed out. Frustration, you know, you're overworked, you think you're not appreciated, and you can get snappy at people at times. So we just have to, we just have to all work on treating each other with respect. And that's something I try to do, but I can do better.
Can I also make another remark? I would like to say that in my time working for the office, I think the counselor sells himself short. And it's been a great experience. But I agree with the sentiment that I think during this pandemic year, I think it's been very difficult, and a lot of constituents are very nervous and concerned, you know, just like everyone else. And so it is important that no matter how critical or serious or, you know, an issue is, or, you know, less critical, we still make sure that we listen and address people's concerns as well as get back to them and, you know, help them work their way through the city of Boston departments to get what they need. So, yeah.
Thank you for that, and thank you for all the work that you've been doing for the Boston community and the Suffolk community as well. We really appreciate just having city counselors and just any government who's just for the people and really like willing to put in the effort. So we really appreciate that. So thank you for all that you do. Thank you for coming and speaking with us today. It was really great to get to know you more and to learn more about what you do. And you can comment if any of this information is not correct. But if anyone would like to reach out to the counselor, here is his information.
I'm happy to pass on our emails in the chat, so I'm going to just put that in now.
Excellent. Thank you, Elizabeth. Thank you to the Suffolk University students. And glad you guys are at Suffolk. It's a great school. It's a great training program for people that are interested in government and helping people, and looking forward to seeing you guys in the neighborhood. And let's stay in touch, and we'd be glad to do this at another time as well. And, you know, let's stay in touch. I enjoyed the conversation.
You so much.
Thank you. So have a great day, everyone, and thank you again for joining us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody.